I call this special meeting of the West Virginia County Board of Education to order. Start out with the opening pledge of allegiance by Mr. Glasscock and the invocation by me. Anyone not wishing to participate may stay seated.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us please have a moment of silent meditation. Amen. Next thing on the agenda is the superintendent's recommendation of routine mandatory out-of-state trip. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Mr. Castello is there second?
Second.
The second by Dr. Christian. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I should have mentioned that Dr. Christian is on with us via phone tonight, today. Okay, so now three is the training session regarding configuration process. And again, this is just a training session, there will be no motions or any action taken. So, Mr. Boothby?
Well, good afternoon. I have some materials I'll pass out to you. My goal today is really mostly just to answer questions. There's a lot of information to digest here. But as long as I'm here, I'd like you to ask me as many questions as you like because I don't want you to be wondering how any of this works. I'll pass these down. Take a few the other way. I have one for the superintendent. And I have one for you. Have an extra one. You guys can chill. So, in West Virginia, for a very long time, since I was in school, there's been a legal process for most kinds of reconfigurations, whether it's just moving a grade of students to another school or moving an entire school into an existing school. The one that we think about the most probably is consolidation. That's where we build a brand-new school, close two other, three other schools, and have everybody go to a new central school. Each of those processes has different requirements. There are a lot of details to that. But what I'd like to cover with you today are the contents of this book. One thing I want to make sure you understand, there's documents in here, the table of contents, you'll see it under nine, ten, and eleven. Those are selected interpretations of the state superintendent of schools. The state superintendent of schools is required to issue and respond to requests for information. People will ask the state superintendent legal questions. And the state superintendent, depending on who it is, will respond eventually. And under nine, ten, and eleven, you see prior interpretations of all by the state superintendent. Some of those were over twenty years old, one of them's over thirty years old. So, some of what's in there, you cannot rely on. The reason I put those in there is because they help to really explain the difference, and this is the key thing, what is a consolidation and what is a merger? Those aren't the same. The general rule is if you build a brand-new school or you take an existing school and completely change its mission. For example, in some districts, they've had high schools become middle-high schools. And there were middle schools and high schools all over the county that were closed and then they all went to this new school. It had a new name, and that was considered a consolidation. The reason that matters from a personnel standpoint is all of those jobs have to be posted and filled, even the jobs of people who just happen to work there today. Because when we have a new school, that means every job is new. When we have a merger, it's different. A merger is where we would, for example, let's say you have pre-K through eight buildings, but you've decided, you know what, we're going to add eighth grade to the high school. Well, those kids are going to the high school anyway. That's not a merger or a consolidation. And that, those are explained in those state superintendent opinions. What, in the terms that they've used, several superintendents have used is vertical and horizontal. A vertical move from eighth grade up to the ninth grade, where you were going to go anyway, that's not a consolidation or a merger. They, we're just saying your class is now there. But if we're taking eighth graders from other schools who would have gone to different high schools, and now we say all of you are going to this new, to this building, for them, that's a merger. They are going not straight up to the high school they used to go to, but to a new high school. That's considered a merger. Again, the big difference between mergers and consolidations are consolidations involve new schools, whether it's physically new or it has a new mission. But in the grievance board, when it looks at those things, and for those who are not familiar, the West Virginia Public Employees Grievance Board gets grievances from school employees, service and professional. And not surprisingly, there's a number of decisions there about school consolidations and mergers. We'll go through some of those here in a bit. But they look at that question, is this a new school? And they give the board a little bit of leeway. So, for example, using the example I gave earlier, if we previously had a nine-through-twelve high school, and now we want it to be seven-through-twelve, is it a new school? Or is it just a school with two more grades added to it? Depending upon the facts, the grievance board tends to let the school board decide, is that a new school? But generally speaking, it's obvious whether or not it's a new school or not, or if we're just pushing a few more grades up. The big issue there is when we consolidate or we merge, all the service personnel and the teachers in the county have what's called a preference vote. The preference vote says that, well, if a job is being created because, well, let's start with mergers, that's easier. Let's say we're merging this school, School B into School A. If you do that, we're going to have new jobs at School A because those kids are now over there. When the employees vote to give a preference, that means any job that got created at School A because the kids moved over, those, and they can vote, they can say no, but it's a yes or no vote, those jobs can be filled just on the basis of seniority and qualifications. So, let's say you created two English teacher jobs at School A because the kids from School B are now over there. If the faculty, senators, the professionals vote to give a preference, that means nothing else in the code that deals with hiring applies anymore. It's just who is the most senior and are they qualified? And they get to choose first. Other people in the county can still apply for those jobs, but the people who get a preference, we have to look at them first. And so that's, that's why it makes a real big difference whether or not it's a merger or a consolidation. Now, in a consolidation situation, every job is new. The whole building is considered new. But again, whether it's physically new or just a new mission, all jobs in a consolidation are posted. Now, the preference vote is also done there. Anybody who's at a closed school can get a preference for the jobs at the new school. Today, one of the things we'll talk about is how do we do that? How do the employees vote on whether or not to give a preference? But having said that, I did want to mention, I have my notes here. We are going to talk briefly, perhaps, about bond issues in new school buildings. But I'm not a bond lawyer, that's a very rare specialty. We have several bowls of rice, but that's not the work I do. What I can tell you, though, is if you're going to build a new building and you would, and you need money from SBA, you now have to go to SBA first, even before you consider doing anything else as far as passing a bond. In 2022, the legislature created a new law that provides, you know, any project funded by the SBA must be in accordance with the CEFP, the Certified Educational Facilities Plan approved by the State Board and the SBA. But the framework has changed a little bit. Now you have to apply to the SBA for funding for these bonds and submit your request for funding to the executive director, right now that's Andy Neptune. Prior to your bond election, it used to be you were focused on the bond election. That process is huge, too. But now, instead of focusing on, let's pass a bond, it's, let's go to the SBA. And, I mean, for lack of a better word, you need their blessing. Because if they say no, you're wasting your time if you need their money. As for the second part of that, just the bond issue, if you're building a new school, you're talking about having a very good idea of what it's going to cost. I emailed one of our bond lawyers, and his response could be about nine pages long, so I'm not going to read that to you. But what he basically said was, yeah, you have to have a real good idea of what you're going to build before you even talk about bonds. You have to get with an architect, engineers. He said the best-case scenario is that you already own the land. He's like, if you don't own the land, where the school's going to go, that slows it down more because you may have to take it by eminent domain, or there may be an issue getting people to negotiate with you, it's just an unknown. But the very short version of his very long email is it would take years. It would, I think you should plan on three to five years. That's probably a little too conservative, but I would, I would say the, the best-case scenario is two and a half to three years. Because you have to get all those other things in line. And just getting an architectural drawing and then the pricing, and of course with inflation now, there's a bit of an unknown there. And then you know what, how much money you need. But that's just step one of many steps. Then you have to get with, and there are experts and consultants, and sometimes the government will help you do this. You have to look at what your tax base is to determine what it is that we need to raise, how much it's going to affect each citizen whose taxes go toward paying the bonds. It's a real long process. And then you have to actually build the thing. And depending, I mean, up in Marshall County, they built that really beautiful school, and was it in?
Cameron.
Cameron, yeah. That took a long time. And, you know, so, so there's a lot to it. If the board's needs are more immediate, in other words, there's some reason or reasons that we really need to get this done sooner rather than later, then you could do this in several steps. For example, you might merge one school into another school and then work on a construction piece that could take years. Merging one school into another, let's see, what's today, August? So, it's conceivable that you could do that for the start of next school year. There would be a lot of steps to take, and that's what we're going to mostly talk about today, is the steps you have to take. But if you're in a hurry due to whatever reasons, construction of a new building is probably not the way to go. If you have plenty of time and money and staff and plenty of people to fill all these jobs in all these different schools, then maybe you can wait and build something. But if you need to make a move soon, a merger is what you'd be looking at. So, for example, and I know of, New Martinsville Elementary, is it's pre-K through six?
Eight.
Eight, okay. And the high school's nine, or nine-through-twelve? And is, how many other elementaries are there?
Three.
Three, okay. So, you know, if, if you're looking at merging elementary schools, for example, one of the myriad things you're going to look at is bus routes and the number of bus drivers you would need. So, instead of going to just, going to a total of four schools, is that right, four total? You'd be going to two or one or whatever. And that's just one of the many, many pieces. So, what we talked about so far is how to configure your schools in, in basically a declining student population situation. That's just the very first part of several steps. The next part is getting the employees in the new building. And, and that's where the preference vote comes in. That's where we still go through our annual reduction in force and transfers, where we say, well, now we, we need this fewer cooks or this many fewer secretaries or bus drivers or whatever. And all of that has to be done. And then, of course, there's the actual physical movement to a new building. In a perfect world, all this stuff happens, and the kids start in the fall of a new year. I think Marshall County, might have been Marshall, but somebody I recall recently started in the middle of a school year. The building opened and they moved in. So, that's sort of the rubber meeting the road final piece. So, there's the reconfiguration part, there's the big personnel part, and then there's the actually making it happen part. Today, I'm just talking about mostly the first part and a little bit of the second part. Let's take a look at, at the very front of this, before the table of contents even. There's a script here for how to conduct what's called a school merger, consolidation, and closure hearing. West Virginia law requires that when you are closing a school, and regardless of where the kids are going, but when you're closing a school building, there's a hearing. Before you get anywhere near that hearing, you have to do a lot of work. If you look in the table of contents, you'll see, let's see. Under tab two, you want to look for eighteen-five thirteen A. And you'll know it because it's got a bunch of red and blue text. Yeah, thirteen A. During this past legislative session, the legislature changed, not a huge amount, but they did change the school, building closure and consolidation law. And the main thing they did is they required a, an impact statement. And while at first that sounded like something kind of new, you know, it's basically the impact on the community, on bus times, on anything you can think of, they now require this impact statement. Well, once we started looking into the law, it turned out that was already required by a state board policy. They're kind of just putting it in the code instead of in a policy. The one difference is if a county board is required to prepare what they now call an impact statement, it used to be called a list of reasons. If the school board is required to prepare an impact statement, when the board votes to close or consolidate or merge schools, they have to give the impact statement substantial weight in making their decision. You know, substantial weight is not really helpful in terms of giving guidance. I mean, what's substantial to one person is insubstantial to another. But all this really does is sort of formalize that you have, in other words, once you make the impact statement, you can't just say, oh, that's done and throw it on a desk. It's that's done, and now we have to sit and think about this and, and weigh out all the different issues. So, this law, eighteen-five thirteen A, which is quite a few pages long here, all of that applies to the first part we're talking about, which is mergers, consolidations, and closures. Going back a page is Senate Bill fifty-one. This is a summary that we wrote at the firm that just describes eighteen-five thirteen A and all of its changes. So, we just wrote, so that you don't have to sit and read this thing and think about it for hours, here's a summary of what they did.
So, what's in here is old?
Yeah, every time they produce that book, it's out of date.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so what's in there is old. But this, this summary will give you a very good idea of what happened with the legislation. Going back one more, eighteen-five thirteen, all that, the only reason I included that is just to let you know, which you already knew, that one of your powers as a school board is to close schools, to consolidate schools, merge schools, et cetera. So, that's where your authority comes from. Eighteen-five thirteen, lowercase a, is how you go about that process. So, one gives you the authority, the other tells you how to do it. But...
So, the impact statement needs to be done prior to a board meeting talking about it?
It, it needs to be put together and, as we'll find out, distributed to the principal in duplicate at the schools that are affected. And so these, so like, for example, when we get to the end of what we're talking about here, what there will be is much thicker than usually. A big three-ring binder of information that is delivered in duplicate to the building that is closing. We, and you're also required to have it here in the central office, but we tend to advise, go ahead and put it in any school that's going to be affected as well. It's not required, but why not have it there so people can look at it if they want to? So, all of that happens before we even have a hearing. So, a lot of work to do between now and the time you have a hearing.
Developing the impact statement, is that something done by the county office or county administration?
The administration usually does that.
The county office?
The administration, yeah.
Okay.
And I had a note about that here, let's see. Probably be easier if I did it on my phone. Okay. The, sort of the start of all this, and I talked to the superintendent, and I, you know, we were talking, well, how does this all start? And I think what I told you was that the CEFP has to be modified, but that's actually not exactly correct. Something like, when Bill Jones was still here, there was a CEFP that was even then kind of old. And in the CEFP was a future forecast. And the forecast said, well, looking at the student population numbers, it looks like at some point in the next ten years, we may have to close the school. So, you actually can modify the CEFP anytime to, to make forecasts. But when you say, we are going to close this building, all the stuff in here has to happen first. And as we'll, as we'll talk about today, once you make that decision, after all the work in here is done, all the procedures are done, the hearings, the gathering of information, the, the hearings in the buildings, and then the board votes, this is what we're going to do. Then all that goes into the state superintendent, and the state school board has to approve. And also, the, the CEFP then, the formal request to close a school or merge a school or whatever is made. But you can, you can, in terms of forecasting what's going to happen, you could modify your CEFP not to make any decisions, but at any time you can say, hey, we kind of see what's coming down the road. Looks like we're going to probably have a shrinking population in this area. We might need to do something. But when you actually vote, boom, we're doing this, then you would, that modification of the CEFP can only happen after all of this is done. So, there are future forecasts, and then there are hard, we are closing, and those are different. But now, I would say that generally how the process gets started is that the board votes to instruct the superintendent to start gathering the information needed to consider whether or not to close or merge a school as, as the case may be. So, and I want to, again, I want to look at my note here. And one of the things we'll talk about in a little bit is the timing, which is incredibly important. So, one of the other steps some school boards take, and I would say more than half that I've been involved with have, is that the, the school board looks to the CEO, the superintendent, to say, do you have a recommendation about whether we should close a school, merge a school, build a new school, you know, looking at all the information that you studied, do you have a recommendation? And at that point, the agenda item would be something like, receive school configuration recommendation from superintendent and possible action on school reconfiguration slash closure slash consolidation slash merger regarding, then fill in the blank with the schools that would be affected. Okay? So, again, you don't have to do it this way, but probably more than half of boards would want a recommendation from the superintendent to get the ball rolling. And then, once you vote to do that, the next item is possible action to instruct superintendent to begin gathering school closing data, you know, something like that. That's what would start the superintendent and the, the whole administrative team gathering all the stuff we're going to talk about today. So, so there you have the power, you have the how to do it, but then there's another how you do it, and that is school board, state school board policy sixty-two oh four. And that is under tab three. This is the version of school closing or consolidation policy that's not effective today. It'll be effective a week from today. I put this one in because the old one obviously would not apply. So, this is the new one. It incorporates the new language about an impact statement. I hate to read to you, but for the benefit of everybody's here and, you know, to kind of point out the things I think are most important. You know, there are definitions in here about what is a school closing, what is a merger, what doesn't apply. But, but then mostly, it tells you what the county procedures are, starting on page two. It says you have to prepare an impact statement. You have to prepare supporting data that supports the proposed closure. And we get that to the State Board of Education for approval, et cetera, et cetera. And then it tells you everything that has to be in there. And this goes on for page after page after page. I, I mean, if there's any conceivable thing of being affected by school closure, it's in here. And we're required to gather all this data. Just to give you a flavor of it, student enrollment trends, population growth or decline, trends in a particular area or school. In the attendance area where the closed school's children will go, you have to look at their population data. And then data for the whole county in terms of population. You have to explain how it is that you made these projections of either increases or decreases. Then there's a section on facilities. And there are at least nine or ten requirements there that you have to talk about things like, you know, comparing what you have at the school that you're closing, then comparing it to the school where those kids would go. Let's see. Yeah. One of the things is not just physical structure, but what are the programs, the academic and other programs at the school being closed versus the school where they're going? And of course, all of this is meant to, it was written to, guide a school board into comparing your options. The rest of it's just about facilities and just fairly dry stuff about, you know, for example, what might the future use of a facility be once it's no longer being used? Things like that. Finance is a big one. You have to show an itemization of what it is you would save if you would make this decision. And then they give you lots of little details, like what is the current annual cost at the school to be closed and for the school where the kids are going to go? And then they give you lots of little details, like what is the current annual cost at the school to be closed, and for the school where the kids are gonna go. And they, they don't leave that to your discretion, they tell you, we want utilities, personnel, maintenance, transportation, other factors deemed relevant by the county superintendent. So the superintendent may have a list. And then the total cost of savings. The anticipated total cost, um, designated by the county to, let's see. Okay, you know, what is the cost gonna be once we move the kids to the new building? In other words, they want you to look at, well, okay, but you're gonna have to hire teachers here, and buses will have to take kids there, and someone has to cook lunch, and they want you to really have an apples-to-apples comparison to see if you're really saving anything. Do you need to renovate the school where the kids are going to go, or can they just walk in? Renovation costs have to be considered, also a five-year history of your finances generally, your unrestricted general current fund. Then, uh, not surprisingly, the personnel, uh, there's a whole bunch of those. Student transportation, um, the impact on the community, and, and on and on. So all of that stuff has to be compiled. And as it turns out, uh, Brook County, I think, is the one that most recently went through something like this in this area that I'm aware of. So there, there are sample books you can look at to get a sense of what it, the detail you're expected to have. But this giant book of stuff has to be delivered in duplicate to the principal of the school that's to be closed, and at any school which the county says, these kids are gonna go to that school. The chair of the LSIC representing the school gets a copy and duplicate. And you're required to have it at the central office for public inspection.
Question?
Yeah.
If, what you're talking about is if you would merge one school into another? So do you have to have this binder of all this information if you're gonna consolidate schools together too? Do they also get that same type of?
Yes, mm-hmm, either way. And the, the, the obvious difference would be that, um, if there's a brand-new school, the receiving school doesn't even exist yet, so it's a little different. But if, but if a situation where they're going from school A and they're gonna join a different school, uh, more of this comes into play. And so, so that has to be there, and then there's a number of other processes I wanted to point out to you. Public hearings, it's the bottom page five, the policy sixty-two oh four. Uh, section three point three says that the county board must provide notice of all the hearings that are required for school closure. They have to be advertised, they're a class-three legal advertisement for three weeks, so it's not like your typical send-down on the agenda. There's extra stuff you have to do. It has to be, you know, like I say, in a newspaper, it's a class-three legal ad, um, that's in the general area now. Are, I, I'm not familiar, is there a regular New Martinsville newspaper? Okay. So are there, is there more than one here, or just one? Is it a daily?
One weekly.
Okay, so...
For the county.
For the county, okay, so you would have to place the ad in there. It's just, uh, a, a newspaper in general circulation.
Now, I, I have to correct myself on that. There's one for Wetzel County alone, but Peyton City has both Wetzel and Tyler County, so Tyler County also has a paper.
Okay.
Usually when we put an ad in, it goes into both the Star News and the...
Then you'd wanna do that, for sure. Um, it has to run for three weeks, and I don't wanna get into the weeds on this, but suffice it to say that once the ball starts rolling, one of the, um, first or second things you will do is create a, a timeline. Because, uh, for example, here's a big deadline, let's say you wanted all of this to happen by next fall, August two thousand twenty-four. This process has to be done by December thirty-first of this year. That means that you have to get on a state board agenda for them to consider the request you're making to modify the CEFP. I think they only meet once in December, so you'd wanna get it in the November, you actually wanna get it done by November, because sometimes, doesn't happen a lot, but sometimes they'll say, well, we need more information about this and this. Bring it back to us at the next meeting. Well, if you don't get it done in December, now you're looking at another year. So, um, you have to have the hearings, uh, at the schools to be closed, you have to advertise them three weeks in advance. There's a whole set of rules about, um, what has to be in that notice. So, so all of this is very detailed, it's not like it's impossible, I mean, it's done all the time, but, I mean, it's not something you can do haphazardly, there's, there's very specific details. And then, of course, the, the notice has to be posted in all schools, uh, we've had boards forget that. This notice that you're putting in the newspaper, the notice has to be in all schools, bus garages, maintenance areas, and conspicuous working areas for all personnel to see. And now on page six, about the middle, that's where you find that December thirty-first deadline. It has to be done before December thirty-first of the calendar year, prior to the calendar year in which the closure would be effective. And then, of course, uh, section three point four A, that's where you get all the details about, uh, the hearing. There are rules for hearings, for example, if you reasonably believe that you're going to have, um, not enough room, and, and this is your regular board meeting room, you'd be wise not to schedule to be here. You'd either want it at the school being closed, or some other facility that can accommodate as many people as you think are likely to show up. Unlike regular school board meetings, they have a earliest time you can start and the latest time you can go. I believe it's eleven PM is the latest you can, yeah, it's in section three point four A four. You can't start before nine AM, and you can't go past eleven. If you have to go past eleven for your hearing, you, uh, would make a motion to recess, and then to meet, uh, start back up at the next possible occasion. One, one of the issues with that is we're, arguably, we're required to do another agenda on notice. So, again, we're getting into the weeds a little bit there, but, um, I've not experienced, I mean, back in the nineties, there were some board meetings that went like until two in the morning, that's how this rule got made. Cause a lot of people who wanted to participate couldn't be there, or they had to leave. So if you look at three point four A five, that's what I was talking about with the problem with available space. You, you wanna plan for the largest possible audience, because otherwise you're gonna have to say, okay, we're gonna get up from here, we're gonna go over there, and you have to post notices on the doors, the whole thing. You're just better off to pick a big space. Members of the public are encouraged to attend, they can submit statements, they can, uh, they have testimony in them. They can ask questions of the, uh, employed staff, not the board members. But they could ask questions of the employed staff at the hearings. Typically, oral statements from people who want to give input to the board, um, can, are limited. Uh, the minimum is three minutes per person. They can be supplemented, if someone says, you know, I, I wanna say this, I know I only have three minutes, but here's a document I'd like the board to consider, uh, they can provide that to you. But it has to be by that, by that time. As, as usual, at least the county superintendent and the formal board has to be here for the public hearing. Yeah, i- if the superintendent and the, uh, well, when the superintendent or other administrators are answering questions, that does not count toward their three minutes. So it's, they have a full three minutes to present, and then we stop the clock, you answer the question, and the clock starts again. Board members, again, don't respond because that's not appropriate, because you're, you're going to vote at the very, very end. One of the things that happens is the, you receive and review findings, uh, from the LSIC. That's something that typically is done before the hearing. When you read it like this, it makes it sound like somebody comes and presents something, but the reality is, that should be done before the hearing, that they present that to the board, because it's, it just doesn't work well to hand somebody something that's, you know, really thick and ask them to understand it. So after all of that stuff is done, there's a formal vote. As it says here in three point five A, the vote may take place at the conclusion of the final public hearing. So back to school A and B again, um, and there could be a C and a D too, but let's make it simple. We're gonna close, well, let's make it three, that's easier. We have school A, that's where all the kids are eventually gonna go. We have school B is closing, school C is closing. You would have a, a separate closing hearing for B and C, there is no closing hearing for A, it's not closing. So let's say you do B first, and then a few weeks later, you do C. At that hearing, when it's over, you would vote right then on whether to close B and C. So in other words, um, you could, I mean, you could do that at the end of B. But typically, we wait till all the hearings are done, and every affected school, uh, and then you vote. Oh, no, actually, that's not an option, it does have to be at the conclusion of the final hearing. Which I think some have interpreted to mean the final hearing per building, but I think it's the final hearing period of every school affected, then you vote. It can take place at a separate meeting, but that's very, very rarely done. After the vote, then what happens? Once we're sure we've complied with all this, then the school board will, um, file a request for school closure with the state board, and then it tells you what that has to have in it, who has to sign it, certain assurances, um, a justification. It has to be part of your impact statement, I mean, every little thing you need to do is in here. You have to show, for example, that you really did have a class-three legal advertisement, and we have a, a way that we typically recommend you do that, to make sure that nobody can suggest that you didn't do it on time. But you submit that proof with it, uh, you present copies of what it is you advertised with. Yeah, this, this is where, I was a little confused about CEFP, it says that you, this thing you submit has to contain a statement identifying that the proposed school closing was included in the county CEFP. But, and you go to three point seven, it says, if it was not in there, the county must also submit a request to amend their CEFP. So, again, they're saying, were you already planning to do this, was this something you were forecasting? We think that even if it was, you should specifically submit a request, um, under three point seven, um, to amend your CEFP. Even if we could dig in there and find something that says, well, we think we're gonna be doing the closing maybe in five, ten years, just go ahead and always include a request to modify the CEFP that reflects all the changes we're making. The rest of this, um, they're talking about emergency situations that we're not talking about today, technical assistance, uh, that you can get from the, uh, department of education. But let's, uh, let's move on, though, to tab four. This tab goes on for a long time, and I'll tell you, some of this needs to be modified. I, I don't think the version my secretary put in here is the latest version, because the latest version uses language that's not in here. But suffice it to say, this will give you a very good idea of the checklist, uh, that you'll have to follow for school closings and consolidations. One of the things we talked about was an impact statement, and you won't see that referenced in here, it just says, reasons and supporting data concerning a proposed school closing or consolidation. Well, now it would say all that, and it would say impact statement, but I really don't think they added a single new thing, it's just the same list. We created this though, so that there's no chance that we forget to touch on any of these things. And if you leaf through there, you'll see the categories we talked about, facilities, enrollment, um, finance, including personnel, transportation, the education program, the notice of public hearing, um, for each of these things. Questions about that notice, questions about the CEFP, and whether you submit it. So pretty much everything we just talked about is included on a checklist, so that you can assure yourself that you've done what you're required to do by law. Now, the rest of this, uh, I, um, would say would, you'd be best off looking at that on your own time. And, you know, it's, it's case law, it's West Virginia Supreme Court cases. But again, some of these are older, and so part of what you're getting is, like, here's one from nineteen ninety-six, uh, under tab five. It's worth reading because it, um, it gives you a flavor of some of the litigation that has occurred, um, with, um, school closings and consolidations, but this is real, uh, everything in here is really in the weeds. I think it's worth reading to get a sense of what the litigation was like, and, and the, the areas where so, schools have made some mistakes. But I don't really wanna cover that with you at the moment. The Workman case, um... Can I have that one in here?
Under six?
Yeah, under six, here we go. I don't know if I meant to include that. Oh, yeah, so let's, let's start with that one. It's listed as Roberts, but it's really, um, Workman's what I think it is. Here, they just say, once again, the difference between a consolidation and a merger is, if the kids are going to a new school consolidation, if they're going to an existing school, merger. That's all that stands for. The Jarvis case is the second thing I told you about today, which is, if you decide to, um, sort of reinvent a school, so it used to be, uh, nine through twelve, now it's gonna be seven through twelve, but it's gonna cover a much bigger area, and we're gonna call it new high school. There, you could say, we feel like this is a new school with a new mission, we're covering different areas, seventh and eighth grade, we never had that there before. We say this is a new school, why does that matter? Because now, every job there is gonna be posted, even the jobs of people who currently work there. The, the courts won't let you just flip a coin or, uh, play fast and loose, it really has to have some logic to it, like the example I just gave. If, on the other hand, all you're really doing is picking up a nine-through-twelve school here and plopping it into another nine-through-twelve school, you'd have a hard time arguing that's a new school, that just looks like a merger. And in that case, for personnel purposes, only the jobs, um, that are new because of kids moving over there, those are the only jobs you would post, everybody else just keeps doing what they're doing. And then, of course, there's the issue of a preference vote. And, uh, the preference votes, we've seen them go different ways, there are counties where they never give a preference, there are counties where they always give a preference, there are counties where the service personnel always say yes, and the professionals always say no, and vice versa. So you, you just never know, that's the purpose of holding the vote. And it probably reflects, um, the economics of the times that they occurred in, uh, but in any case, uh, they get that option. And then Bailey, uh, under tab eight, really, I, this decision gets into a lot of details, but this is an example of where a school district said, oh, this is a new school. And then they said, well, the grievance board looked at that and they're like, it sure doesn't look like that to us, because you didn't do any of the stuff you're required to do to close this school and open this school, you just are making that up. And what happened in the case was, someone in an existing school, the principal of the school, was told, you no longer have a job, because it's a new school. Well, lo and behold, they never closed that school, I mean, they never did anything to change that school. So she was saying, how could I possibly lose my job, this is just a merger, not a consolidation. So I, I know I keep coming back to that, but that's one little issue that, that comes up a lot. So that's why you really wanna get this stuff right from the beginning, i- i- if it's what you choose to do. Again, nine, ten, and eleven just deals with merger versus consolidation, what a vertical change is, meaning you go from the school that you're at now to the next school you were going to anyway. And then horizontal, where you're leaving the school that you're at, and you're going over here somewhere that you never would've gone normally. The one under tab nine does touch on an issue that may be relevant here. I don't, I don't know. But one thing you can do is close grade levels. In some reconfigurations, I'm thinking typically it's middle schools. What happens is they'll have like a K through six school, or K through eight school, and they'll decide, we're gonna have one county middle school. When that happens, all those schools stay there, they don't go anywhere. You just move the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to a new middle school. In that case, you would have to have a closing hearing at every one of those schools that lost a sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, because they're losing part of their school. That may or may not be relevant to, to what you need to do here. But even if you close a grade and move them, you still have to do all this stuff for that school. And so it, it multiplies your work a good bit. Under tab twelve, this is an example of a ballot that is used for precautions. And I think all this stuff is made up, I don't think, you know, it just uses fake names like Madison Elementary, Washington Elementary. But, but this is a sample of the ballots that are used. So, for example, in the first one, yes, I desire to give priority to classroom teachers who are assigned to Adams Elementary when filling jobs established at Washington. But when you go down to the second one, it's, it's showing that, you know, here's, yeah. So it's elementary schools matriculating to new middle schools. And so the first one covers Adams, the second one covers Jefferson, and the third one covers Madison, and then et cetera. But you get the idea. So if there's multiple schools involved, like where we're closing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then sending them all over the place, you have to have a ballot that covers all those. There is another option, and that's under tab thirteen. That's where you put them all together. You don't separate them. And we've seen it done both ways, and it's up to you all how you wanna do it. And some counties will say, okay, look, we're just doing one. We give them the preference vote or not. And sometimes that goes over well, because people think, why should we have different rules and filling different jobs? Sometimes it does not go over well, and they prefer to do it school by school. And again, I don't know what you're considering, or what schools are gonna be affected, so that may or may not even be relevant. If you go over to the very last tab, you will see a generic memo that goes from the faculty senate or service personnel supervisors to the superintendent to say, please distribute these, conduct this election, here's what the votes are. The original ballots are supposed to remain at the school and file, unless, of course, the school is actually closing, and then it would have to be sent to the central office. But suffice it to say, if you go back to the very beginning of the book, the very first page before the table of contents, once you've done all that work, once all of that has happened, this is what would happen right before you vote. And you call the public hearing. You'll notice that this one, at the very bottom, it says, no decision upon the proposed closure will be made tonight. The proposed closure will be the subject of meeting schedule, yada, yada, yada. That would only be for prior hearings. At the last hearing, that would not be part of that, you would vote. And, you know, the motion would be pretty simple, you know, make a motion to close such and such elementary school, or whatever, and you vote. So once you get through all that, you have the hearing, when the hearing's over, you vote. And then everything goes to the state school board, as we talked about, with your CEFP modification request, the request to close the school, et cetera. So with all of that said over the last hour, I'm guessing you have a few questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, in the time we have.
Okay. I usually have one.
Okay.
So on your list for preparation of school closure documents.
Which, which tab?
I'm sorry, that's tab four.
Okay. Yep.
That's everything that has to take place and is spelled out and done by the school administration.
Yeah, the central office typically.
At that point, we're not, we're not involved in that.
I don't think any of these would be. This is all, I, I think this is all done completely by the administration.
And then they bring, does it come to us next?
No.
Before it goes to?
No, it goes to the buildings. It's delivered in a duplicate to the principal of the buildings that are affected. So they'd be both sending, the school is closing, and the school that will get the kids. Then separately from that, the notice of the hearing, that goes to everybody, every place in the county. But this information, this big book, two of them go to each school that's affected. I, I mean, you could certainly get a copy, but it's not something you have to approve, so far as I know. It's just that we're supposed to have all this. And it says that the county board prepares it and reduces it to writing, but that's actually a pretty good question. I, I don't know that you would have to, I, I've never seen language that says you have to approve it. It just is what it is. But somebody reminds me, I'll, I'll find out if you have to vote. Joe Beth Gilbromy, do you have to vote on the contents of your list of reasons? I don't think so. But, but if you do, I'll find out one way or the other. It's a good question.
And this is an easy one. When you were handing these out, I forgot to grab one for Dr. Christians.
Yeah, we have an extra.
If we could, after him, please. Thank you.
I have a question, if I could ask one.
Sure.
You were talking earlier about the grievance board with what they determined was a merger. If, if, this has been done in the past in West Virginia. If, if two schools were to consolidate, or even more than two schools, to consolidate and use an existing structure with, you know, all new, you know, school name and school everything, school colors, school mascot, would that still be considered a merger? Or is that, at that point, a consolidation, just using an existing structure?
That sounds like a consolidation. The, there, there's no bright line test, but if, if the name of the school changes, the programs they offer changes somewhat, you know, as far as the mascot and the school colors, that's probably less important. But one of the ways, I think, school boards have tried to make the argument that this is a new school, is saying, well, but this, this school used to only serve this attendance area, now it's gonna serve this much bigger attendance area and draw in kids from different parts of the county. But if it's still gonna be a nine through twelve school, you know, you, you could make the argument that it's a new school. And, and I think you would get some leeway from the grievance board on that. Certainly, changing the name and the mascot and the colors, and maybe offering some new programs you couldn't offer before, would go a ways toward convincing the grievance board that this is a consolidation and not merely a merger. But I, the, the big issue there is, if we say this is a consolidation, then that, the consequence is every job at that school will be vacated and reposted. So.
Okay, that was, that was my question, from a personnel standpoint, how that would be treated.
Right. So if, if there's a feeling that, boy, we're really pushing our luck calling this consolidation, maybe better just to call it a merger, because that, you'll get no pushback on that. But.
Or we could add grade levels.
Yeah, you could actually, yeah, if you add grade levels, then you're definitely looking at a new school. If you've never served eighth graders before, at a high school, for example, that would, I think, push you over the edge to say, that's a consolidation. Substance of things like that are like, we've never had, you know, certain program there before, like AP language courses or something. And now, suddenly, we can offer all these AP language courses and AP science, and maybe things we've not been able to do. But now that we have enough people there, we can make that happen, things like that. But adding a grade definitely changes the image of the school. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot.
Yeah. Well, and, and so the, the biggest thing is, I, I would say, now that you have a sense of what has to be put together, luckily, you have a lot of talented central office people who are, you know, capable of doing all this stuff, so it's not like one person has to do it. The real question to me, if I were you, would be, how soon does this need to happen? And that typically is a function of, are we having trouble filling jobs? Why are we having trouble? Is it because we're trying to serve multiple small populations? Or it's just nobody goes into teaching anymore? Or is it, you know, something else? Or is it a financial thing where, you know, we can no longer afford to, to pay utilities on multiple buildings, because that money could be better used somewhere else? Or the maintenance on older buildings? I mean, I've heard all of it, but typically, it's a slow-fast question. How soon do we need to do this? Or not only how long can we wait to do it, but are we confident that we can convince the SBA to fund our vision in part? In a, in a dream world, Tyler County, for example, they just write a check. They don't, they don't need to ask for money. So in a dream world, you don't ask the SBA for any money, and you don't need their blessing at all. You can just do it. But if you're looking for SBA money, then you're saying, okay, can we convince them? Then can we convince the voters that this is a good thing and have a bond? And then you actually get the thing built. So as I said, that's years.
If, so if you go through this whole process.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the most important. I can't believe, I almost forgot this. If you consolidate and the, the voters approve it, you don't have to do any of this. None of it. If, if you have a bond issue, and it says, we will build a new school, and we will close these schools, you don't have to do any of this stuff. All you have to do is get it passed. So if it passes, and the voters approve the bond, and the bond language explains, we're building a new school, and we're closing these specific schools, none of this has to happen. So that's the other side of the coin.
So if the bond would pass, then you just continue on to get more information and get started looking for land or whatever?
Right. Of course, by that point, typically, by the time you, because of the, the mathematical financial calculations involved in telling people how many mills will be involved, you pretty much already know about what you're gonna build by then. So, so that would involve, even to get to that point, you had to have hired an architect and engineers who can tell you, can you even build a building like that with these soil conditions, or this much access to highways, or whatever? But yeah, that, I, I can't believe I didn't put that in my list.
So are you saying, though, if we, if we go forward and try to pass the bond, and it passes, we can pull all those schools together in the, in the, this location before this building is built?
No.
No.
You can't.
Okay.
In, in other words, if you're, if you're going to close them before the magical day when the new building opens, you have to do all this. But if you build the building, and then we simply send people RIF and transfer notices, your job no longer exists at the school because it's closing, then it's a question of just posting all these jobs, getting them filled, and then we look to see what's left. There's an order in which you wanna do that. I think, I believe the order is, you always have a preference, because even though you would not have to go through this, the school is still closing. It's, you know, it's still being consolidated into another school. So there's gonna be a preference vote. And you would get all that done, you would have your staff in place, and then you look and see who's left. And, and some of them will get non-renewals, some of them will get termination notices. One thing that will never happen, though, is those people can't transfer into new jobs, because you can't transfer people into vacancies. So i- if you build a new high school, and you post all those jobs, no one's getting transferred in there. They're going to have to bid to get those jobs. The one possibility, and I, I've not really researched this, the one possibility I can imagine would happen, is that somebody, for some reason, refuses to bid on any of those jobs, and they're very senior. Then, when their job's eliminated, they could take one of those jobs that's already been filled. But I've never seen that happen. It's just, it's theoretically possible for that to happen. But yeah, if you, if you can pass a bond issue, there's no school closing hearing, there's no legal advertisement, there's no gathering of the impact statement data, none of that.
So you would do all the architectural stuff, looking for the land, all of that?
That would be.
Run a bond, and?
And just do the rest, and then of course, post the jobs and fill them.
And if you run a bond and the bond fails, then you start the whole process over to?
Well, that's.
Try to do it another way?
The board has to decide, do we wanna try to do this again? Now, one thing that has changed is in West Virginia, I think you can only do it at primaries and elections on even years now. You, you can't run them just anytime, like, have an August, you know, bond election. It has to be a primary or a general election. So that throws a monkey wrench into how soon you can do it again. Typically, but I can't say typically, because this law is new. But in my mind, if that happened, and, and we decide to go for a new building, and the bond election fails, and you're looking at positions you can't fill, money you don't have, repairs you can't afford to make, my guess is that the board would then immediately go to merging, or something like merging. So it, you know, it would really depend on that first vote. That would be big. Now, years past, you could just stick it on a few months later. Of course, the board has to pay for those special elections, which is not even an option now.
And we'd have to, we'd have to go through all the stuff to ask the blessing?
Yeah.
For the bond.
Yeah, well, yeah, if, if you, if you, if a bond, a bond issue fails, you're definitely waiting, I think, at least a year or two years, or a year and a half, because you can't do it the following spring, it'd be the spring after that, because it's even years. And if, if you are, if you, like you say, if you say, well, now we have to do regular closings and mergers, then you're back to this, which eats up a lot of time. So, you know, realistically, if there's schools, and again, it depends on what your timetable is, but if you feel like you have to get something done by August of two thousand twenty-four, the only option is to go through this. I, I don't even know if you could get, well, I shouldn't say that. Well, yeah, if you wanna get it done, if you wanna have, the, the change is made by August two thousand twenty-four, this is the way you're gonna do it. If you want to wait and try to pass a bond and build a school, then it'll just take a lot longer. Typically, whatever you choose to do, we obviously would provide advice and explanations, and if there's any pickups in there, we can help smooth that out, because we've done a whole lot of this over the last thirty, forty years.
So filling positions would be seniority-wise, or all new jobs, or?
It depends. If, if the, if the members, let's just use teachers, for example. If the faculty senate's vote in favor of giving a preference, then the new jobs created get filled just by two things. Are you qualified, and what's your seniority? If they don't approve it, then we use the regular method, which is a nine-factor test. In this case, though, because you would be having existing teachers, there's a. In this case though, because you would be having existing teachers, there's an eleven-factor test that's in the code. So yes, seniority would be probably the biggest thing other than being qualified if they get, give the preference. But if they vote not to give the preference, then it'd just be business as usual, you just fill it the regular way. Which for professionals, seniority's just one of many factors. For service, it's always kind of based on seniority anyway. The, the, with service personnel, the big difference is this, we would ignore applications from anybody who's not losing their job because of school closures. And then if there's someone left over, then we would look at theirs. But if, when service personnel vote to give a preference, we focus on the people who lost their jobs because of closures and placing them at the new school where new jobs are created.
So in teachers' seniority, which, were they, have they had ten years seniority now? Maybe starting over? Were they, they still keep that ten years?
No, your seniority never ends. In fact, for professional employees, their seniority keeps going, even if they leave us and go to, say Wyoming for four or five years and come back, they get their seniority back that they had when they were here. Service personnel, it's completely different. When service people quit, their seniority disappears forever. So this business with changing buildings or whatever, that has no impact on their seniority, it just keeps going.
So if, excuse me, when it comes to SBA, if you went to build a new building and you have to go to SBA, and we have eight schools that's in perfect shape?
Well, it's, it's, it's hard to tell. I mean, you go through the SBA director first and they can, they put you in touch with their staff, because there's a full-time SBA staff there. They're not political appointees, they're just regular people working there, architects, lawyers, things like that. They give advice about what they see as being doable. Ultimately, they, they meet and vote on which of these projects they're going to agree to be a part of, and lots of people are asking for their help. But the way it's set up now, you go to them and you get their blessing, and then you put it on the ballot, and then the voters say yes, and they can still turn around and not give you the money unfortunately. But the point is, you're never gonna get a cent of it if you don't go to them first and follow this new procedure that the code has. I, I have no reason to believe that they would ever reneg- the, the thing that happened this last year that is a bit of a question mark. The, the school building authority used to be able to sell their own bonds, just like we would in a bond election. They would just say, well, we want fifty million bucks list next year, let's go sell a bunch of bonds. They can't do that anymore. The legislature took away their power to issue bonds, or to sell bonds. So now, the legislature has to give them money to give to us. They can't raise it on their own through bond sales. So if the legislature would just say, well, we're not gonna do that next year, there's no money. I don't think that is likely to happen, but as long as the SBA is consulted in the way the law requires, then the voters say yes, all things being equal, then they'll, they'll put up the money. But you're competing with other people, other counties.
Have you ever started one process and then some things have changed and you have to switch?
Yes.
I don't think we've done that. I mean, it would, you have like an example in mind or?
I'm just thinking, if staff members decide they don't wanna be part of a consult, well, part of a merger, can you stop, if you lose staff and decide you might have to-
Like in other words, they see what's coming and they all flee?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we, I've never seen that. And typically, it's, that might be a reaction people have at first, but I think when they see the cold hard facts that are being presented, they'll probably be more understanding. But the other thing is, people have an emotional reaction, but I, I don't see people selling their homes and just moving away and, you know. Yeah. So is, is it possible? It is, but what's your alternative? If they don't want to be part of a merged school, they can certainly go elsewhere, but if we stopped it and said, okay, well, let's try for consolidation, again, that's years away and we may not have years. If you're doing a consolidation and they don't wanna wait around for that, then I think the alternative is no better, but, yeah, I, I think there are always options, it's just a matter of time and money though. Do we have time? Do we have money? Can we afford to wait?
But none of this process can go forward to the board or to the administration until we approve it, correct?
It, it doesn't actually say that, but typically, the board would at least say, we're instructing you superintendent to start the process of gathering this information. And we typically advise that before that happens, the superintendent recommended. So for example, the superintendent could say, I recommend that we start the school closure process for this school. And so the response would be, we have a recommendation superintendent, have a second, you know, motion, second, dah dah. And then if that doesn't pass, then it's just status quo, we just keep doing what we're doing. But if it does pass, then there would be a second motion, and again, it would probably be an agenda, would have to be an agenda item. We're instructing the superintendent to start gathering the information required for school closures. But, yeah, I mean, it, it would be unusual, I mean, I suppose, I suppose that administration as part of their making the recommendation could start gathering that now on their own just so they have it ready, yeah. But it wouldn't end up in an impact statement unless the board's going forward with some kind of, and again, even, even when you say yes to a superintendent's recommendation, that doesn't mean you're going to close the school at all. All that means is, you're, you're authorizing, start gathering the information. You don't actually vote to do it until way at the end, because you might get way to the end and say, well, this, these numbers are not adding up, I don't see why we need to do this. But, so when the superintendent says, I recommend we close and et cetera, the recommendation you're approving is not to close, you can't do that legally, that has to happen at the end.
Correct.
Yeah. All you're suing is saying, start gathering information. But again, I think, yes, the superintendent and central office staff probably would get ahead of this by starting to gather this before they recommend it. Because if there's gonna be some debate, I would think you'd wanna have a lot of facts to talk about.
The other side of it is, that's an awful lot of work to go through that and go one for vote not to, not to do it. So it'd be nice to know that upfront on the administration from this side of it.
Right. And of course, we can't know what the board's gonna vote, but, and I'm not saying you should do all of this, that, that would be probably a bad idea. But, but you know, these are the kinds of things that the state school board's gonna look at when they get your request. And I'll, I'll go another step further. Well, let me finish answering your question, which is, I wouldn't do all of this, no. I would do some of it because that informs the superintendent's opinion that, yeah, I think we need to do this. The other person that I think is really involved with this that I haven't mentioned is the state superintendent. I would be meeting with her before I went too far down this path, because the state superintendent, if they're on board and they see that this is what we should do, that's gonna make a big difference when the state school board ultimately votes. Because if the state superintendent's like, this doesn't make any sense to me, you can forget about it getting passed to state board. I mean, in all but the rare circumstances. One notable exception happened a few years ago, but you pretty much wanna have that meeting before you get this ball rolling. So you want the SBA and state superintendent, everybody to be sailing in the same direction. And that goes back to Jeff's question, which is, how much of this do we need to gather? I think you need to gather enough to convince those people that this makes sense or that this is absolutely required.
Is there a point that you can get to that you can't turn back?
No, you, you could always, I mean, because even if you do everything and you get to the end of work, you just say, no, we're not gonna do it.
That's what, where we start out, maybe making some votes to discuss and move forward, but then whenever we get to that point, which could be years later?
Well, I think you could get to this point within six months. I think that's doable, but all you're doing is just having a hearing and then voting yes or no. But you could always vote no, or somebody could walk into a hearing and say, oh, but you're not looking at this, and you go, oh, yeah, well, maybe we should do that, you know? That's, that's what the whole process is about, is having all this good information, hearing from the public, and then deciding, but you can always still say no.
Something you clarified to me that I didn't realize, which isn't good for you, but it makes me a little feeling better, is this is mostly all done by the management of the, of the county staff?
Right. It would be very unusual for board members to be involved in any way. In fact, I, I recommend that they don't be involved in any way because someone might seriously question your objectivity on the vote if you're the one preparing the information that you are going to look at. And that's the one, the one question you brought up, I, and I've not heard that question, but it's a good one, is does the board need to approve of the information gathered in the statement reasons? I don't think they do, but I'll double check that if you remind me.
I'll remind you, I got it.
I'll forget between here and part of this board.
I got it. So it would be up to me to recommend which direction I think we should keep looking at after we gather information?
Yeah, and, and again, you don't have to gather all of those, but you have to have, because there can always be a debate and it would be, you know, I assume some vigorous debate about why, then you would wanna have facts and, and scenarios that could happen if we do or don't.
Well, and I think, to, to posit it to you guys, you presented at the last work session to people in the audience and up here, a packet that you'd already started looking at numbers, so that's, so.
But that typically would be, be the word, the very first thing. And again, not everybody does it that way. Some, some school boards wait and, and just put on the agenda and say, we're ordering you to go gather stuff, but we have found that it makes more sense since you're the ones that are gonna gather, and you're most familiar with the hard data for the superintendent to recommend it to kick things off.
As far as just discussion with people in the community, staff, students?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna close my school? How, how do you wanna answer that, just?
Oh, you mean if they're asking board members?
Uh-huh.
Oh, well, you should, there's really only one way to respond to that and say, I can't talk to you about this and I have no idea. That's, that's either six months away or it may never happen. You know, we may never get there, we, we may get shut down by one of these other people between us and the end, like the SBA, or if we go for consolidation, or we, our superintendent could have a meeting with the state superintendent and be like, I don't see me supporting this, you know? So I, and all you can say is, I can't talk to you about that because I have to be objective and, and just look at the information in front of me. And in fact, by talking to people in the public about it as board members, you raise the possibility of somebody who's upset at the end of this process filing a lawsuit that says that you were biased and that you, that there wasn't really a fair process. And that has happened. There was, in a different kinda case, I think it was a county commission sitting as the, I don't know, urban develop, they were sitting as some other body, as, as public bodies do sometimes, like they will also be the zoning board or something. And it, I think it was a Marshall County case, but it went to state supreme court and they said, when you're voting on something in a quasi judicial fashion, you have to be like a judge. You know, you can't be out investigating or, you know, having backroom conversations, you have to be like a judge who's neutral. And then you just hear the facts and say yes or no. Which is hard to do when people are calling you, I know. Happens a lot.
Well, and I think, in all honesty, when somebody first gets on the board, including myself, what you know of what you think the board can do and what the board is supposed to do are not always the same thing. And it takes a while to realize that we don't have the power to make decisions like that, we just, we're not the managers.
Yeah. It's true.
But we still have to watch what we say and how things are worded and-
Oh, yeah.
So, okay. Good question.
Does anybody else who has any other questions or comments?
I think this was good. I think we needed to all kinda hear this so that we can gather data if we so choose and make good decisions based on the law.
I'm, I'm probably gonna think of more questions after this, but it's just, this was a lot, but it definitely does clear up, it is a process, and I've heard that, but seeing this.
Well, the good news is that you won't be called upon to, to gather that, but you will be called upon at the end to look at it.
That was, that was good news for you?
For them, they don't have to gather.
I just wanted to correct.
Bad news for you, you're about to get really busy, especially in finance. Yeah, it's a lot to put together.
And then a lot of this can still change in between the time we start and finish.
Yeah, I, I don't think this particular process will change because it just changed and they typically leave alone for a couple of years when they do something, although not always, they surprised us before. But actually, a- again, one of the things I just wanna mention, as you're looking through the decisions and you're reading these, the older ones in, in the state superintendent interpretations that are older, take those as a grain of salt because you're gonna read some things in and there, they're exactly the opposite now, because the, what happens is, you, we get grievance board decisions or state supreme court decisions or interpretations, and the legislature gets those and goes, no, that's not what we meant, and then they change the law. Well, the law's changed a lot since nineteen ninety-one, so I only put these in here just to give examples of like vertical versus horizontal, consolidation versus merger. So, you know, don't get in the weeds in these too much.
Any other comments? Not, I will call for a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Castleton, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Snice. All those who agree with adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned at four twenty-seven.
And if you guys can-